Good evening, let's call the order to Shakopee School Board Business Meeting of May 20th. Please call the roll.
Aldrich?
Here.
Christiansen?
Here.
Mikiyan?
Present.
Peterson?
Here.
Tomzik?
Here.
Tucker?
Here.
And Bowerman?
Yes ma'am, would you please join me in the Pledge of Ladies, stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we're gonna start with good news tonight, we've got three really fun items, and I'm gonna try to introduce the first one, I don't think we have a representative, but we have some folks here that we're gonna recognize, and this is the Minnesota DECA State Competition, in fact, here comes this news. I like the Blazers.
I like them.
I like the Blazers already. So we had thirty students that participated in the annual DECA State Career Development Conference, they get that name right, in Minneapolis, they competed in more than fifty events, things like entrepreneurship, finance, hospitality, marketing, or other related fields. The competitions are designed to simulate real-life business scenarios and test the students' academic understanding and skills development. Five of our students received state recognition. I'm seeing three of you here tonight, so two of you are not. So we had Dan Hunter, who got third, this is at the state level, Dan Hunter got third in Business Services Marketing Series. Jacqueline Monck, okay. Principals of Finance got third, she also got third in Financial Consulting. Double here, something like that. Three, hold on, and Accounting, you got first in the first round, first in the second round, and first in the central region. Outstanding.
Joe, you...
I'm taking a moment.
Wow. Himani Yoshi, Human Resource Management got fifth. Akshay Vankayala?
Close got that.
Okay, trying. Marketing Communications Series got fifth. Visara Sock, if I'm saying that right, got Employment Interview, is the category entry level, Employment Interview, entry level, second, alright? So in addition, Dan, Jacqueline, Himani, and Akshay competed at the International Career Development Conference in Orlando, so it was international level now, in April. This event is referred to as the pinnacle of DECA competition. The IDC results include Himani getting top role play in Human Resource Management, and Jacqueline, again, Principals of Finance, got top role play in top ten finals. I mean, that is outstanding. You guys should stand and be recognized, number one. Before we give you some certificates and recognition, tell us just a little bit about your experience each one of you in DECA, and what you liked, your favorite event, and why you do it, and where you're gonna use it going forward.
I can start. I did the event where I was, my event was called Marketing Communications Series. Basically, that means I just go in and they give me a little prompt and I just, on the spot, have to sell something to the judge.
Oh wow.
So that's basically what it is, and it was a lot of practice, not even just the technical part of it, but more of the soft skills, just knowing how to interview well, knowing how to present yourself as a well-res person, stuff like that. That's really gonna help me carry that through my life and keep that level of professionalism going.
Business careers in your future, you think?
Maybe, I'm thinking about it.
Okay, excellent. Go ahead.
So I competed in, as you said, different events, so I'm just gonna give a quick little synopsis of the three. So Principals of Finance, which is the one I took to international level, that one was very similar to what Akshay had, except mine was more of a wider range of skills, so for one of them I dealt with customer service at a bank. Another one was introducing a college-age student to a credit card and what the importance of good credit is and how to maintain that. And then, Financial Consulting, this year the prompt was creating a budget for a millennial that makes forty thousand dollars a year and wanted to begin investing and saving for their future and paying off their student debt, so I learned a lot doing that. I learned that money is very small and a lot of, a lot of costs go into that, and it very quickly ran on money and I realized I still had to pay for a car and insurance. So, that's an interesting one. So that was very interesting, seeing the reality of that. And then Accounting, the virtual business challenge, I was able to go through a business's financial records and try to find errors, there were always three accounting errors that you had to find, and that was just very interesting, seeing how small, like one little mistake could be and it could lead to a giant financial difference in a business, so it's just finding the quick ways to identify that in online simulation that was timed.
So a business career in your future too, maybe?
Yes, in finance.
In finance, that's right.
This, in Orlando, I competed in Human Resources Management, which is similar to theirs in that you don't really know what you're getting into when you go there. I had to deal with anything from a wellness program to how to deal with an active shooter to how to relocate families, and it was kind of a curveball, not something I knew a whole lot about, to be very honest, but kinda have to roll with the punches, but as far as what I got out of DECA, especially this year, it's only our second year as a chapter, and I was lucky enough to be a member of it last year, so I was able to be a co-Vice President and help kind of start putting down the foundation for DECA to grow and expand in Shakopee High School, which was exciting for me, and yes, business is my future as well.
Who is the DECA advisor?
Miss Diana Lee.
Well, she deserves credit too.
Yeah.
Well, so we have a few certificates.
No, I have a few. Thank you.
I feel like I had to give you four.
Congratulations. 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 How many different colors have you written in?
I...
Look who's on top of this list again.
Chase, Chris, and Mary are...
Alright, let's move to the good news about the State Speech Competition, and I believe we have, is Katie?
I'm right here.
There you go. Come on up, Katie.
Alright.
Brother, he's saying that, you take it away.
Okay, so we have five students here from the speech team, we had a lot of students have success this year on the speech team, but these five have gone above and beyond everyone else, and they definitely deserve the recognition that they deserve, or that they have here today. So, the first four, those are all in different orders, this is hard, Agrem and Himani, CJ and Gotham, all qualified for the state competition, and state and nationals are a little different in speech, so we'll get to the national piece in a second, but at the Minnesota State High School League level, there are thirteen different categories for speech, so we have four different categories representative, and they can tell you a little bit about their category in a moment. This is the most we've ever taken state as a team, and we have one of the most difficult sections in the entire state, with top ten teams sweeping the board all the time, so to get four in there, we definitely made some people sweat this year, and it was really, really nice. So, they'll tell you a little bit more about their categories. Gotham and Anjali both qualified for the national tournament, which is different than the state tournament, each state does different categories. This particular national tournament takes high scores throughout the season, and they have to qualify with different legs. So, for example, Gotham, right away, in the first two weeks, was placing super high at tournaments of, what, two hundred kids in each category nearly, and he was placing in the top ten, and qualified for the national tournament right away. Anjali just right after him, again, in categories with about a hundred or a hundred fifty, and placing in the top eight. And so, they qualified for the National Individual Event Tournament of Champions in Nebraska this year, and this is the first time we've taken anybody to this tournament, let alone two people, and they both were smacked out in the middle, and they did a really, really nice job and blew people out of the water, reading their critiques were probably my favorite part of the season, seeing really great feedback, so, yeah.
Congratulations. Congratulations. She's on the spot, here in speech, so this shouldn't be that hard. Just one at a time, stand up real quick and tell us the event you're in, and kind of what your highlights were. Mind what you have to say.
Sure. I'm in a really unique category that's specific to Minnesota, and it's called discussion, so it's not your traditional get up and speak in front of an audience, you're actually tasked with something from a topic that's decided that year. This year it was social media and its influence on society, really, and pop culture. So, I had to, every Saturday, wake up at five in the morning and go and sit next to people and try to solve a task with each other while also competing against each other, and at the state tournament I ended up placing second, which I'm really excited about because that was my, my goal was to do better than last year, I was able to accomplish that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
CJ, Brad.
Yes. I'm in extemporaneous reading, essentially, I analyze a book of poetry, and then I perform it in front of people. I'm in the draw category as well, which has extemporaneous, basically I have thirty minutes to put together a piece and present it each time, so, very stressful, yeah.
Anjali.
So my piece, or my category that I'm in is called prose, and it's different between CJ and Himani's, where mine is prepared, and I worked over, worked with my piece over the summer and prepared it from a book, and I take different cuttings and put it together and create a ten-minute script, and I perform it, memorized, throughout the season.
How long, ten minutes, you said?
Yeah.
Memorized.
Did she also learn sign language for this?
Oh wow.
That's exciting.
All right, so I'm Gotham, I do original oratory, so that's probably one of the things you kind of think of when people kind of think of speech, it's kind of your typical speech. I do research into a category of my own choosing, my category this year was about ad hominem's, which is a type of logical fallacy we see in our everyday lives, and so I have ten minutes to convince everybody that it is, first of all, a big problem, and then I kind of set my own way of approaching it, and it's kind of a persuasive speech to, one, inspire people, but also motivate them to fix kind of different aspects of their life, and this season was really fun for me because I really started to advance more than I had in past seasons, and along with that, I got to meet a lot of great people, so, great experience. What was your logical fallacy? Ad hominem's. So it's about how we attack people irrationally rather than using logic.
That sounds like the logical...
You're talking, you're still one of the political office, when are you gonna write the words?
Agrem refuses to answer.
So, my name is Agrem, I'm in a category called extemporaneous speaking, which is like extemporaneous reading, in which you only have a limited time in order to prepare your piece, so essentially I go, I draw a question, and I have, which is usually about domestic or international politics, and I have to, thirty minutes to prepare and memorize a seven-minute speech that answers that question and also has an argument behind it and driving force as to how to either solve it or address the issue further.
I have a soft spot for that one, because I did that one in high school as well.
He was the youngest competitor in this category this year this day, so...
Outstanding. Well, we want to recognize you guys again. Congratulations. 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 Stay clear for guys. You better go back.
There we go. One, two.
Anybody?
Okay. Oh, great. That's awesome. Alright. Aw, you guys are kind of so good at taking pictures.
One here, one, two.
That's... Congratulations.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
I'm gonna be sorry when we get to the regular meeting.
Yeah, this is fun.
Okay, third one. Let's see, we've got...
Suzie.
Yeah, two.
Suzie?
Yeah, that's Suzie. Ah, good, all right. So we're gonna recognize, I'm actually gonna turn this over to Paul in just a second, because I think he has kind of a special connection to this, but this is the 2018 Faces of Change Award, and it's through PACER, they don't give me a definition of PACER, but PACER's National Bullying Prevention Center, oh, that's what PACER is, must be Prevention Center Award recipient, is that what PACER stands for?
So PACER is an advocacy group for families who have kids with disabilities.
Okay. So this is through the PACER's National Bullying Prevention Center Award, these are recipients, so we want to recognize all the GLOMIs, and if you see this stack here, folks, that's the stack of the kids that participated in this, so it's great, but we're gonna recognize three of our own staff who really work on this, but Paul, you might wanna say a few things.
Yeah. If any of you guys have been to a varsity football game in the last three years, you might have noticed my son Jake dancing on the sidelines, he was the manager for three years, and Jake is severely autistic, and the way the Shakopee School District has gotten him to come out of his shell is just phenomenal. His peers just treat him like anybody else, and you can't thank good kids, and, you know, every year he gets his, you know, his GLOMIs, and they're just his best friend from the school year, hating aside. And it's just tremendous things for him, and Suzie, you know, I know Jake is graduating this year, but you're still a friend of the family, so, you're stuck with us.
I'm happy to be stuck with you guys.
Well, Suzie, Wade, and Jen, why don't you three come on up, and you can kind of maybe add a little color commentary, any three of you or all three of you, on kind of what this is and what it is you do, and...
And by color commentary, you mean... Just kidding.
Yeah, I'd say, I like it, though. So...
Oh, so, you want kind of how it started?
Yeah, just what it's all about.
So, yeah, so five years ago, I had, so I run a sitting three autism program at the high school, and I had a parent reach out to me asking if there were any programs at the high school that would allow her daughter to make friends, socialize, work on all those soft skills that she needed to practice on. I was brand new at the high school, I looked around, couldn't find anything, so I got pointed in the direction of these two, they were starting a branding class that year called GLO, stands for Great Leadership Opportunities, so I reached out to them, shared with them an idea, saying, hey, do you think we can go somewhere with this kind of peer-mentor friendship-type deal? They were all about it, went and talked to their first group of kids back in 2014, and those kids were gung-ho about it, so it all kind of started there, from a parent request, just wanting time for her daughter to make friends, and then it turned into this, so, so they provide us amazing general ed students, and then we take them and partner them up with our students down in the special education wing, and they're buddies all year, and it's amazing, so that's, this is year five.
How many general education students participate, Jen?
I would say, this year is actually our smallest year, and we have forty-five students this year, I would say in the past we've had upwards of eighty kids that have been involved, and so sometimes they'll pair up with our special needs students, where this year it's kind of a more one-on-one relationship, but it was really, it was Suzie's brainchild, and she really worked with our general ed kids in that first, it was the graduating class of fifteen, to really kind of define what this would look like, and it's, it's just grown every year, almost realistically to the point that kids are taking GLO to be in GLOMIs, that the leadership part is only second, right, to being involved in GLOMIs with, with our kids.
That's great. Wade, you've been doing this for five years now?
Yeah, yep, it's gone by fast.
I know.
But ultimately, you know, GLO, we're lucky enough to work in a lot of different venues in the high school, our lead kids go into homerooms and do leadership activities with kids, but what Mr. Christiansen was talking about with GLOMIs, it's ultimately the most transformational thing that our students get an opportunity to do, and for as much as it affects the lives of, you know, the kids who get to work with Suzie every day, it affects our kids even more, and like permanent, and it causes the exact kind of long-term changes that, again, Mr. Christiansen already talked about at the high school, and that's what, we're just, speaking for Jen, we're just really lucky to be a part of it, so...
Well, you guys are scoring at East too.
Yep, so East started junior GLOMIs last year, and actually I met with, with the teacher from Sweeney this morning, and then a teacher from Red Oak who want to start a mini GLOMIs.
Oh, wow.
Well, I'm being asked with you three, but who you represent, basically, today, let's make sure and give you a quick...
Thank you so much, thank you.
Hello, we're gonna take pictures, honey.
Yes, thank you.
Now, your parents are here.
No.
Suzie's got the kids.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Suzie brought the kids.
One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Hannah, I know, don't take a motion to adjourn. No?
Careful, I might do that.
Yeah. Alright.
Perfect, thank you.
Hey, you can stay.
There we go.
So we'll pick back up with some of the more mundane things. Item number four, let's move to consideration of agendas presented in any edition, I think we're square.
We're good.
Good? I'm looking for a motion to accept that presented, thank you ma'am.
Second.
Thank you Paul, any additions or comments, I should say? All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Postpose, motion passes, we'll leave it at consent. I don't think we have any comments or anything, well, we'll ask for it, but I'll look for a motion to accept consent at this point. Thank you, Kristi.
Second.
Thank you, Joe. Any discussion of consent? None? All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Postpose, motion passes? Alright, now we're into item six, and we're gonna start with Ed, come on up, get a little update on the south side, I think this is gonna be very interesting. Take your way in.
The south site is gonna be beneficial to the school district, it's gonna give the extra fields will help be, in being able to house all of our own teams, less dependence on the city fields, which opens up more scheduling flexibility for our sports. It's gonna give us the ability to expand our intramural sports, which is a huge benefit there. The site will be available for use in the fall of 2020, the fields will be used for practices and junior varsity games, they will also be available for rental to the outside organizations. For those of you that don't know, the high school's up there in the top, south site is down about a mile south of there, it's on the corner of seventy-nine, seventy-eight, seventy-nine. Some people call it seventy-eight, seventy-nine project, some other people call it south site project, we don't have a definite name right now, so that's the location of it, and if you see the yellow pin right there, that is our grounds building, where that's where all our grounds, equipment is housed and our ground crew works out of. This is an aerial site of the, aerial shot of the site before any work was done to it. It consists of multiple different properties, that's why the red lines are there to combine to be one. There's gonna be a total of eighty, or there is a total of eighty-six point four acres, sixty-seven point nine acres will be usable after we put in the ponds and the practical grading. That's the design plan there, there is room for a phase two in the bottom right corner and over on the west side there, at this time there is no phase two scheduled or anything, it's just there if we decide later on to add a phase two. The upper right corner was the area that was seeded last year, let me go back, all the fields there are gonna be irrigated, except for the one field way over here to the east, I'm not sure why, that wasn't part of the planning on that one, why that one isn't being irrigated?
Because, wasn't that a later addition, additional parking there originally?
Yeah, that was, they went back and, we were going back and forth on whether...
Right, that may be why, I don't know.
Okay. So probably wasn't, probably wasn't in the original, yeah.
Okay, that would make sense, so, so last year we got the upper right hand corner up there, that was the area that was seeded in 2018. Last week they were out there with a level, laser leveling and seeding, they did complete all of the seeding and leveling last week.
About three years.
The irrigation is gonna come directly from one of the retaining ponds, it's the pond right, right there with the red arrow, in the picture you can see the well over on the other side. This is a view from the west, looking east, from up on the hill there. This is the, from up on the hill, from the south looking north. This is a view of the road, from the road right there, looking at the north fields, that shed in the background is our grounds, grounds shed. This is the main entrance, the main entrance is already completed, first layer of tar is put down. We're in the process of obtaining the permits to add the required turning lanes on County Route seventy-nine, once that's been completed, there's gonna be fencing and a gate installed later this summer, the gate will close off the entrance, so when we're not used, it's gonna prevent cars from getting up in there and being up there when they're not supposed to be up in there. All of that, do you guys have any questions, or?
Is there only the one entrance to the parking lot?
There is only gonna be one entrance off of seventy-eight, or off of seventy-nine there, currently, from our grounds department, you can come up that way, and there's like temporary road in there, but that's gonna be seeded over, and if there's a problem with cars coming in that way, we'll have to figure out putting up fencing or some rocks or something to prevent people from coming up that way.
I know some of the original planning, in terms of just ideas, had another one on, if that's seventy-eight, seventy-eight to the west side of it.
Right.
So I know that that could be done in the future, there's, could be an access point there, but obviously not right now. The way it's more controlled too. True, it's just, if everybody's leaving at once, it can get backed up, everybody's been to the soccer fields and have one access in and out of there, it is, it's a mess when every game ends at the same time, so that's why it would be a good idea to look into, but yeah, I mean, if you can only control one, makes sense, but...
Well, I believe, Reg, you were in Bachman, this was the second, I believe the county determines how many accesses we can have, and it's, it's not our decision to be...
Yeah, well, if we can't, then we can't. Well, I don't know if it's we can't, it's just that I think that that's a step we have to go through, and we'll probably have to explore the utility and validity of doing so, but your point's a good one, and we'll have to obviously consider that.
Yeah, that's part of the turning lanes, the county's requiring us to put in the turning lanes, so...
Is that six hundred and fifteen parking spots in that big lot, is that what that six one five is? Or is that five one five? I can't quite think that out.
That, I'm not sure.
It looks like it's six fifteen, but I would assume that's a numbers basis?
That would make sense, because it looks like eighty-one, one seventy-eight down.
That's a lot of cars.
It is, and to Joe's point, I mean, it looks like, like we find out it's seventeen thousand, it gets crowded, and the box, boxes up a lot of things for a long time.
Well, and, well, you say it's a lot of cars, and I think we have to also acknowledge this is, we're graveling this, right?
Yeah, from the, the main entrance up to the cul-de-sac will be tar, then the rest is just gonna be gravel, which has already been completed.
So my point is, while it says six fifteen, that's spaced out evenly, you know, if you have a parking lot, so it's probably gonna be simple a little less than that, not that that's gonna solve the problem, but it won't be striped, so, it won't be that probably compact.
I will say, Joe, Joe, for soccer, this last weekend was the Shakopee Cup, the SSA Cup, and I had a lot of questions on how soon can we play on those, how soon can we, because we were playing games, you know, single sites all over the place, and it's great to have the complex, but SSA, oh, grew that about five years ago, right, so having a second multi-field site will go very far.
First thing I thought of when I saw this, I'm like, oh, more fields for the Shakopee Cup.
Where the food truck's gonna be, right? We're all bouncing houses, and they'll be used for, for multiple sports, there'll be nice revenue coming from that, I guess.
Is this for co-curriculars as well as for...
Yes. Ed, I don't know if you have any answer to this, but if we wanted to in the future add irrigation to the one field, because it is close to the irrigation yard, I'm assuming we could do that, practically.
Yeah, yeah, we'd be able to do that.
Okay, what's the total overall cost of this gonna be?
That one, I do not have that figured.
I will say, Joe, Joe, for soccer, um, this last weekend was the Shuckeby Cup, the SSA Cup, and I had a lot of questions on how soon can we play on those? How soon can we, cause then we were playing games, you know, single sites all over the place, and it's great to have the complex, but SSA, oh, grew that about five years ago, right? So having a second multi-field site will go very far.
First thing I thought of when I saw this, I'm like, oh, more fields for the Shuckeby Cup.
Where the food truck's gonna be, right? Where all the bouncy houses and that, they'll be used for, for multiple sports, there'll be nice revenue coming from that, I guess.
Is this for co-curriculars as well as for, um?
Yes.
Ed, I don't know if you have the answer to this, but if we wanted to in the future add irrigation to the one field, cause it is close to the irrigation. Yeah, I'm assuming we could do that.
Yeah, practically. Yeah, we'd be able to do that.
Okay, um, what's the total overall cost of this gonna be?
That one, I do not have that figure.
Uh, it's in the bottom of the table. It's less than two million. I can't think off the top of my head, I pictured the spreadsheet that I saw for whoever, I can't find it. We can find it.
Okay.
If you wanna follow me, I wasn't here for the planning, or this, I just started here last July, and it was like midstream, so, I don't know all the answers, so.
No, and Ed, you did great, I mean, the, the thought for this agenda was informative and vital, cause there are questions, simply what is the south side? What's going to be there, and when does it come online, and so, but yeah, if there's other questions, we're happy to, to find those answers too.
I think the big thing we need to stress is it'll be the fall of twenty, before it's playable, right? Some of the sites that were played out this week, they were planted in the spring and played on in the fall, and ten years later, they're still not good condition fields, right? So we wanna make sure that we have fields that are playable for decades, not, you know, quick use.
Right.
I think it's worth remembering too, that this was really important, the site, as we looked at going to the one large high school rather than two. The idea was that we won't have as many kids who can play in organized sports, co-curriculars, so we need a really healthy intramural sport facility, and this was the answer to that.
Yeah. The last thing I would add is we have the twenty acres to the west of this, right? Twenty-seven? Which we're holding as it won't be developed as part of this, but if we need another middle school or something down the road, that's land that we, we hold.
I believe that site is nineteen acres.
Nineteen, okay.
But we can tap, part of the reason, again, probably getting in the weeds here, but we purchased it back when, a few years ago, because we can tap into the green space that this is to count in the acreage you need to have for a school of different sizes.
Yeah.
So it actually allows us to leverage this facility, if you will, this space.
Will this south side actually have a name?
I guess we'll have to decide that at some point.
Ridgey Bowerman Sports Complex.
Yeah, I don't think so. We want successful teams. Don't curse with that. But that's actually a good question, and probably something our facilities committee ought to think about at some point.
Look at it sometimes.
Yeah, there is, as I've known right now, there is no formal lien for it.
Any other questions for Ed? Good update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so kind of in keeping with the theme, and actually took in the last meeting, Mike's gonna update us regarding the bike trail.
Yeah, the, the bike trail, and we've, uh, well, we've talked about bike trail and approved bike trail, it's a fantastic idea for kids, and this would be one of those that, uh, sometimes great ideas are great, you know, sometimes people think alike, and the city invited me to a meeting the day after our most recent board meeting, and to discuss the bike trail. And I wasn't certain exactly what they wanted to discuss, and they said, well, we have a very similar idea that, that has just, you know, kinda come to the point where we feel we can have a discussion. We were looking, you know, we're not looking at building a bike trail, but certainly as, as two public entities, we don't wanna be redundant with one another, uh, so we had a great discussion, you know, their bike trail suggested site is over by Corey Lake, ours would've been at South Site. We've looked at that, we've looked at the site, which would be bigger, it has the potential for additional easement land with XL. I've spoken with each of the stakeholders, the folks, John Omen, who's our bike team coach, strong advocate for kids biking, to give his take on things, and he is very supportive of looking, let's, uh, let's let the city see if they can indeed bring the Corey Lake bike trail idea to fruition, uh, because it would be a bigger site, it would be a site that could be used for competitions where the south side could not. And I've learned a lot in this, the, evidently, some of these bike competitions at the high school level, level will get a thousand bikers. At one competition, which is just amazing to me. The growth of that, the number of kids participating. As you'll recall, we also accepted a grant, uh, from the Shuckeby, Menawakka, and Sioux communities, so I went and spoke, uh, with Rebecca Kirk Stratton, or, yeah, Rebecca Kirk Stratton from there, and just to make sure that, uh, you know, that they were okay with us taking a look at the city's project too, and they certainly are, they're supportive of, you know, what's gonna be best for kids. And at the end of the day, uh, that's, you know, I've, I've shared an email with the board, and that's where I've landed, that I think we, uh, we owe it to the kids of our community to, uh, you know, allow the city the time to see if they can bring a Corey Lake bike trail to fruition. Our kids would benefit, we would have the same arrangement for them, they would have access, uh, just as they would if we had a bike trail at South Site, they would have access for all their practice needs, in addition, competition needs. There'd be some other training pieces there, the contour of the land works really well for some smaller, uh, training loops, and so ultimately, that seems like that would be an upgrade to the bike trail idea, so we're gonna let the city work through that, but I wanted to bring that to our public board meeting and say, you know, typically that's, that's not how we operate, you know, we vet an idea, we work through it, and I think we did a great job, but if somebody comes along with another idea, even if the timing is less than perfect, uh, at the end of the day, I think we need to do what's best for kids and what's best for the community as a whole, and so we're, we'll continue to, uh, work with the city, and, uh, we're hopeful that they'll have an answer by the end of August in terms of, of what a bike trail at Corey Lake might look like, and if it'll be approved, and so, I'm excited about that possibility, and happy to answer questions.
Now, would this be where the city also shares the cost of building that?
They are, they're willing to, you know, they, they were looking at doing a bike trail, and so our contribution will be exactly what it would've been originally. It'll be the, uh, the grant monies, uh, and then it'll be our labor, you know, probably at least a couple times a year, and then as needed of our, you know, our students who would use that trail, uh, and so the city is also committed to doing that, building a trail, and it would be on city land, and ultimately would be owned by the city, but our kids would have, like I said, the board would have basically the same type of access that they would have if we owned it.
Okay.
Do we know timing, as far as when they would have something constructed? Or we see a delay at least?
Well, we had challenges too, as we were looking at south site, so I think, you know, depending on how the fall weather goes, there's a chance it could be fall, but it, it probably does extend into next year, but the thought being that we hope, we, we wanna, everybody wants to get it up and running as soon as possible, but some of that'll even depend on, you know, the timing, when you can bring people in to move dirt around, and if we had a, you know, if we had a, a fall with moderate temperature, or a late season to do some of that, I think, you know, there's a chance, but, uh, we'll know more about that as we progress through, you know, the city, but it's very likely it could extend beyond the end of this year.
And the Menwakka didn't know that, and they're accepting of that?
They do, and we'll, we'll work through that. Again, I think everybody's committed, uh, you know, the Shuckeby, Menawakka, and Sioux community, the city of Shuckeby, the Shuckeby Public Schools, that ultimately wanna do right by kids and by the community, and so we'll, we'll figure out, um, how to make, you know, how to make that happen, and so, as we get information, we'll continue to work together, um, to provide opportunities for our community.
That's great.
Other questions, comments? So effectively, we're gonna place what we took action on two weeks ago on hold, in lieu of the city moving ahead and seeing where that's gonna net out.
Yep. And we wouldn't have been doing work over this time period anyhow, so, you know, we've got the seeding and the other work happening at South Site, so us putting it on hold is...
We're not losing any grain.
No, we're, we're not, so.
That's a nice site out there, that'll be a great addition to the Corey Lake area, I think.
Yeah, I just talked to somebody, evidently, they, I don't know if they did well, but they were going trout fishing there last Thursday night, and so...
I know people who...
Yeah.
So, pretty neat. Alright, we'll move on to item six point three, and this is gonna be an update regarding the community's, uh, facility task force, and I turn it over to the facilities committee members, I don't know how you guys are gonna coordinate that.
I think we can all just contribute, um, uh, it was a really good first meeting, I think, that everyone whom you elected, um, was there, was present, and would be able to make the meetings that have been set up through the rest of the year. Scott and Ben did a really nice job of providing information about buildings, a little bit about student demographics, that really generated a lot more questions, there were great questions by the group, and I was really excited about the variety of people who were there and the, um, expertise that they bring to it. There are a couple of times when there are questions asked, and they're, oh wow, I didn't think about that, well, that's a great question. So I think it's going to be a rich discussion, and we're going to come up with some good ideas for everybody here, so.
Kristi?
Yeah, I mean, I echo everything that Judy said, I think there's a great variety of, of participants from the community, from our, uh, staff, our buildings, um, I, I just was really excited when I left, because it was such a great discussion, right, right from the get-go, and I, I think that this committee will definitely bring back, um, some great ideas as to how they suggest moving forward with, with our spaces. Very energetic, not afraid to participate, ask questions, I think Scott and Ben left with a pretty lengthy list of research, uh, topics, uh, to bring back to the next meeting, so, uh, you know, obviously, as, you know, Judy and Matt know, there's, there are a lot of things that are intertwined, um, with our facilities, and lots of questions that came up about topics that weren't necessarily part of that committee's task, but they are intertwined, so we have to try to manage that separation, which will be a challenge, but...
That kept coming up.
Yeah, it, it kept coming up, so.
You guys have set it on, and just a great, great group, great energy, a few kind of, why'd you guys do that? Why did we do that, right? Thinking back, and it's, um, but yeah, it's great, and it's a great group dynamic to, to challenge and ask good questions, and like you said, you know, one domino falls over here, and it's got an effect on this and that, and yes, it's a good thing that Ben and Scott and, and Mike and Dave have plenty of time to prepare for the second meeting, cause there was a lot of questions asked, um, for a lot of details that don't exactly just sit on a shelf somewhere, and it takes some time to, to create, so, I think you guys have a pretty good sense of homework?
We left with a list.
It's alright, that's correct.
Your next meeting, you're gonna...
A lot, a lot.
Yeah, I was thinking you were, you weren't doing it right.
Yeah.
Slammed it this summer too much. Okay, good. Any other questions for the facilities committee?
That's it.
Thank you for your...
You're all welcome to attend, it is a public meeting, so other board members wanna sit in the gallery.
Task force for their energy and enthusiasm.
Yeah, that's great.
Alright, we'll move on to item six point four, Jeff, you wanna come on up? Get our monthly finance update.
Yeah, we're tore up already, am I right? So this is the April, uh, general fund, uh, budget report, looking at the revenues and expenditures, and again, uh, budget amounts, and how they are tracking, uh, to the per year actuals, so, um, I think in the memo that I sent down, I'm saying the same thing, we're tracking, we're tracking right along with, with where we should be, so, um, I'll just point out a couple things, the, um, the local fees and interest, talked a little bit about that with the group at, at five o'clock with the board finance. Um, I think with the way things are going, probably when I come back here in May, we might have that, uh, that budget remaining balance, uh, taken care of, so, that's one that we would say we're, we're tracking better than, uh, better than our budget. Jumped down to, uh, salaries and wages, again, that's a big, big part of this budget, well over eighty percent, um, can see that in the current year, so as of four thirty, we've spent seventy-one point three-three percent, tracking better than, um, the last two years, and, um, I know last year, we probably ended up with a pretty good positive balance, so I think that will be there, um, this year as well, so, um, in a nutshell, we're looking at revenues over expenditures of that six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, I think things are actually tracking, uh, a little bit better than that, um, and most of that surplus will find its way into the, into the unassigned fund balance, and we wanna keep, uh, keep improving that fund balance, uh, putting that back to probably where it should be, so, questions? I, I also left a comment in there about the, um, the sale of property, which was part of the original budget, we made a budget revision, we know where they, uh, probably do that in the next fiscal year, so, that just pushes that increase in the reserve down to, um, into, definitely, yeah, so, questions? Yeah, I'd just say we're, we're tracking right where we should be, I think, even a little bit better, we looked at some of those numbers earlier.
Just as a reminder, cause I haven't asked this question for a while, um, other expenditures, could you just throw out some examples of what would fall in that category if we're selling newware?
Other kinds of expenditures, I don't know.
Thank you. Set that one up pretty nicely.
You know, it's, um, I think our ties fees are in there, so, I think in terms of, of object codes, so that's the, um, basically the eight hundred series, so it's dues and memberships, um, our ties expenses, we've got a special assessment that's, that's a part of that, um, and then we have a category, it's, it's not a big category, but it's the miscellaneous expenditures, which is also part of it.
So, while we're tracking really well, we're not expecting it wouldn't fall more pot of gold at the end of the year, that, we just think that's...
That might be an area where, yeah, part of, part of that is expenditure, uh, time speeds, or a little bit less than, than anticipated, so they're in there, so, um, yeah, you know, I should add that, and we talked about this in our earlier meeting, um, I mean, this year we sent out a memo to all purchase all buildings, all sites, um, that as of May seventeenth, we think you should be done with, that's not, doesn't do the salary benefits, but purchase services, supplies, equipment, and so on, so, um, we think, so we had a cutoff as of May seventeenth, and it's Friday, um, so we should, uh, take the, uh, I guess take that equipment line, our revised budget five point seven, I expended, now, this is only through April thirty, so we've had some expenditures, but, um, you know, we can think, when you get to May seventeenth, we should be done with most of our instructional supplies, equipment, can expenditures, so, um, I think doing that will help with, with, uh, enhancing some, uh, positive budget variances as well, so, um, we know there will be some things that are needed after that date, they can be approved, although that kinda helps us wind down the fiscal year.
When the, when the budget was approved last year, what was the, uh, number for revenue over expenditures, the grab, six forty right now, do you remember?
You know, I think, I think that, um, yeah, you could just add the one, one million dollars. You know, we made, I, we made a few other budget revisions, um, but I think by and large, it was the one point one, and I think the other, I think the other revisions that we made had an impact of about seventy, there were some significant changes for enrollment, for some staffing cuts.
Right.
But I think that overall, the, the net impact was about seventy-five thousand, if I recall, so, um, so if you, you know, there were some changes, but, um, I think for the most part, in fact, taking that land, say, a lot of the equation, the original to where we end up revised is pretty close.
I mean, is that what the column is, six thirty eighteen, in terms of, that's what we approved?
No, that's last year.
No, that's, that's last year, that's last year actual.
They just considered a one point one difference.
Yeah. Yeah. Once it's, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So again, tracking, I think, uh, right where we should be, so.
No surprise.
The question...
The word's out of you, it's no surprise.
Thanks, Jeff. You bet.
Thanks, sir.
Alright, move to item seven point one, um, we actually have somebody assigned to all of these, just to make sure you're not talking about it. So we have Mike's contract, moving benefits, uh, reflecting the fact that Mike was moving and relocating to the district, he has a moving benefit, which we all approved, or the board's approved, um, none of that's changing, other than you've made some kind of personal timeline changes in terms of thinking you're being a temporary residence for a while, so your, your expenses might've all hit this current year, now, you found a permanent home, that's probably gonna result in some of those expenses just carrying over till the next fiscal year, so this addendum, and I'm probably giving this more discussion that it even really needs, is just simply changing the language that allows for some of the expenses, the total's still the same, benefit hasn't changed, it's just allowing for some of those expenses to fall into FY twenty, so after July first. And I think we were all notified of this, is there any questions on that? But we actually have to make a formal addendum to the, to the contract, so, I have something that I'll be signing on behalf of the board at La Angelina, but I wanna make sure that we're comfortable with that and we'll approve that.
Yeah, it was to our benefit for Mike to move into temporary housing mid-year, to get him into the community, and now to make the permanent move after July was...
Absolutely.
This is very... very easy.
That's all it is. Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Angela.
Second.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Then I will ask for approval of the twenty eighteen twenty-one superintendent contract addendum. All those in favor, say with your name, "Aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, you can sleep tonight, Mike.
I'll let you know when we're moving. So, you can tell me where you're going to that day.
I know I'm already going.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on to item seven point two. Brian, do you want to come up?
Yep.
Pick up kind of where we left off the last meeting. This is the seeking approval of the home system project.
In case anyone didn't hear it. All right. This might be a quick one or a long one. I don't know what kinds of kind of questions you have. Exhibits A and B, these are the binders as proposals from two companies that you met the last time around. And what I put in the rap and what I handed out just now was kind of a breakdown over some of the major factors that one would consider in this project, including cost, impact on the end users, how long the system will last, features it would have, and what it would take to maintain it over time. And what I'll tell you guys is that as a department, we kind of agonized over this for a while, because we got what we wanted. We got proposals that looked at really two distinct paths. One was a path where we upgraded the system that we had, the surplus well for going on thirteen years now. And the other was a path that was kind of the wipe everything out and start from scratch option. So, the Mitel path is the first one, and the Cisco path was the latter. There's good arguments to be made for either one. What it came down to, for me, was a couple of things. One was looking at making that transition to a new system in terms of our end users. If we stay with Mitel, it's going to be an easier transition for someone in the classroom working with that system. It's not as big of a change. And so, the accompanying question with that is, are they giving anything up that they really need in terms of functionality? Cisco system has a lot of bells and whistles. There's a lot of roads you can go down with that. But are they what we use day to day in our environment? The answer is no, not really. The Mitel system lets you do those things, lets you do, you know, the manipulation of how you like receive your voicemail, or using, getting things off on a different device, like going through an app on a personal phone. It lets you do, set up things like WebEx or that kind of stuff. That's a third-party add-on for that, but it can still be done. I mean, all that types of functionality, you're not really losing it. There might be different types of integrations with Cisco, but you're paying for it. So, that was a big consideration. So, kind of settling that question of, do the staff in general, the teachers, the students, does anyone lose out staying with Mitel? Comfortable with that answer from my perspective, that they're not losing out on anything. And then the other big question, of course, is how much is it going to cost? Gaining this thing out, not only for initial implementation, but over the lifespan of the system, you know, turn it up, getting it installed actually is not too far apart, but over time, that gets worse and worse, because the Cisco system is going to cost you easily twice as much a year to keep running and maintain. And that's just going to always be the case. That's not going to go down. It's probably going to go up, when you consider that you may have other add-ons that could tack onto that system. So, given those key factors, my recommendation is that we proceed with the Mitel system as presented. And I guess I would ask at this point, what still lingering questions do we have, or else do you want me to try to respond?
Have you thought long-term about these options that Cisco has that we don't use now? That will we use them? Because I don't think, because you're right, if we're not going to use them, what's the point of having them?
You know, these are both strong players in the market. I would tend to think that anything that may evolve over time, that the Mitel system may be able to incorporate that, or there'd be a third-party add-on to make those things happen. And that would generally be the case, unless you went like, you know, some urban basement system that you'd be able to, you know, it's one of those games, right? And you don't know what's going to come next.
Right.
What's going to be the next iPad? What's going to be the next big thing, right? But it's a mature environment and a company that's been around, right? You know, I'm comfortable with that. How many more options would the Cisco have versus the Mitel? That's a tough question without, I mean, for the end user, like, I think in terms of functionality, or sort of add-ons, or what? Functionality. Yeah. I think that some of the integration with some of the like video conferencing types of tools is probably tighter and nicer on Cisco. The Mitel can do it. It's just not as pretty sometimes, but it's certainly, it's definitely a major.
It's a good, it's a good functional.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So, one of the questions that I had was in regards to the growth, and I'm not sure how many lines, you know, we talked about this up until, during the last discussion, number of lines.
Yeah.
Do you foresee, I would foresee a lot of additional lines unless we had a building facility or something to that effect. What the capabilities are from a growth standpoint, is there, Mitel system have a limitation, or the Cisco one that we should be aware of?
Not a limitation that we would hit.
Okay.
And then in terms of the actual hardware and the physical stuff we're putting in place, we'll actually have a little bit of room for growth with what we expect out for this. So, we kind of built some of that in. The other advantage, depends how I look at it, with going with the Mitel system, is that we can continue to use our existing handsets. Now, I don't want to use those forever, because some of those are as old as our system. So, what I kind of mapped out and budgeted for is a gradual replacement of those, and just make that part of our normal replacement cycle. We'll probably do like fifty percent upfront and then stagger the rest, because not everyone needs the new handset right away. There's a lot of courtesy-type phones or just room phones that they're not going to really benefit from what the new handsets have in terms of additional functionality. So, if we don't need to get it right away, why spend money right away? We can stagger that out. So...
So, we'll confirm motion?
Yeah.
If you guys are comfortable, or...
I know that the, we use Mitel at the office. We just migrated over to that, so I know a little bit about how it works, and so far haven't had any issues with it. But I asked our E T guys what they thought about it, and they didn't have anything. I have to say, oh, then I guess, maybe we should be aware of, because obviously this is a much larger, school districts is a much larger user than my company, as far as number of lines and stuff, so.
Sure. And we just migrated away from Cisco mine, so.
Yeah. I've heard a couple of people that have migrated away from Cisco as well.
Good motion. I'll second.
I heard Paul give the motion, and Matt the second. Is there any other discussion or question?
So, this expenditure then is part of the technology, rent dollars of the community supported a few years ago.
It is, and this is a...
Part of that ten-year technology.
This is a project that was actually specifically identified as part of the communications of the community about what things we wanted to do in the question.
Anything else? I would, yeah, there you go. I think Brian, you and your whole team, really deserve kudos, not only for the diligence you went through, but the way you presented it and provided, you know, good information from, I think, right?
Yep.
Make it digestible for a non-technical person like myself. So, thank you. Please share that. Thanks for that.
Absolutely.
Great job.
All right, we have a motion on the table to approve the recommendation for the Mitel Connect System. All those in favor, say with your fine by saying "Aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? Those opposed make the same sign. Motion passes. Jump to the conclusions. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, sir.
Jeff, Brian.
All right. Last two people, oh, he's still in the room, too. I was going to say, last two people in the room, come on down. Nancy and Dale will move to picking up, I guess, where we left off last meeting, with the Shakopee University pilot, and another item related to it.
So, if you remember from the work session, we presented a proposal to you of piloting beginning this fall and completed through the winter of the next following school year, a ten-credit local district credit to help facilitate our year two and three non-tenure teachers, the opportunity to really go deeper into our instructional framework and really build a nice foundation of skills that we're looking for for our teachers in the district at a time when many of them maybe would struggle to kind of be going back to school. And it's kind of a value add for them, at the same time, a value add for us. So, we'll provide the instruction, and they'll provide the time and the effort and the work in terms of the learning. And so, we are just looking for you to approve the idea of the pilot. And then we're going to talk a little bit, Dale's going to talk a little bit about them making some adjustments through a MOU with our union contract, which doesn't currently allow us to do what we're going to pilot. So, looking for action just on the pilot itself. We went into a lot of detail about it the last time, so I don't know if you have any questions at this time.
I do have one additional question. Those second and third-year teachers who don't opt into this, will they continue to do the process that we've used in the past for second, third-year teachers?
So, about my second year here, Judy, we used to have kind of a, maybe it was even, you would probably remember this, at the end of my first year here, we used to have a second and third-year induction program. But in talking with Dale and the union, it was quite burdensome. It was kind of a key, a portfolio system, and the feedback was not good at it. And most importantly, and I mentioned this to you, they would turn in the portfolio and nobody would look at it. And that deeply disturbed me. And so, we stopped doing that. So, most of the service and orientation and onboarding we were doing is really for just the first year. And since we've done that, we've kind of tried to, that's kind of where some of this conversation came from. We've been trying to look for a positive, viable way to work more with our second and third-year teachers that are more new to the profession. And so, this is where some of this conversation came from.
Okay. And so, if any second or third-year teacher who decides not to participate won't have anything else?
Correct.
They won't have a specific district design program that supports them, but they would still be obviously receiving support through their PLC and...
And through our district professional development days and those type of things.
So, it's not that they're abandoned, but the nice thing about this is it provides some very specific supports at a time that, you know, I think where it's beneficial, you know, as people are still learning the ropes. And I think from a district perspective, you're, we're really trying to help the, some of the newer teachers really get a deep understanding of the core principles that we're putting into effect through the characteristics of the Shakopee educator and the six Cs and the...
Critical practices.
Four critical practices, right? Thank you. Which of these are all centered around. So, I think that's one of the huge advantages that I think for that cadre of teachers who go through it.
And then finally, if all second and third-year teachers, or however many wanted to do it, they would be accommodated?
For right now, this is not...
Although, not for the pilot.
Not for the pilot.
That would be the goal, I think, if we can, if this works well, then the goal would be to be able to offer as widely as, you know, as possible to accommodate as many as possible.
How many second, third-year teachers do we have in this district?
So, I think you and Annie analyzed that, and you thought there would be about sixty teachers that would qualify for sixty-five.
Yeah, I was going to say sixty-five, maybe. Yeah. How many is this pilot on the table?
No, more than twenty. And we'd be looking for some nice representation across grade levels or content areas, specialists, so that it, you know, wasn't all just from one building or one location.
Yeah. Big advocate of training, but, you know, they're not going to be engaged like with that portfolio system.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you anticipate filling the twenty pretty easily at age?
We're going to find out.
Well...
We'll get the email. Get ready.
We may as well get a set, probably.
Given that we, given that, you know, we haven't tried something like this before, in our minds, it makes, like, we think it's going to be super popular, but who knows? So...
Okay. Any other questions on this particular element? I would only confirm that nothing has changed the documents.
No.
Okay, so that's the same from last time. Now, a process question. Would you like to talk about the MOU, just so we kind of have full context, or would you care? Why don't we just do that, and then we can, we'll act on them individually, but that way it might spark a question or two. So, go ahead.
Yeah, so really, the only purpose of this MOU is because right now, the contract is very clear that the only kind of credits that you can use to move over are university credits, college and university credits, and particularly graduate credits. So, you know, for this to be viable, if we're going to adhere to what is in the contract, we need to offer an exception in the contract to allow this. So, we've tried to put some very specific wording here. So, we're just adding to the end of any place where it references the fact that these need to be graduate-level courses, we're adding, or be district-identified Shakopee University professional development credits approved for lane changes. So, it's really just giving it the idea that we offer, the district offers other professional development, but the only ones that are going to count for lane changes are district-sponsored Shakopee University coursework. So, it's very specific. So, it's not just any professional development, it's the Shakopee University development. And that occurs like four different times, and then there's seven point, three point four there, the rate. It's, the wording is slightly different in a couple of these, because it's just referencing also that these are outside the contract date, and that's what allows for that to be counted towards a lane change, because it's not occurring, they're not double-dipping, right? So, that's really, that's really all it is.
Have you talked, has Jeff looked at this as far as a budget perspective?
Yeah.
Even if we were to open it up eventually down the road?
He's looked at it from a this year or next year sort of perspective, you know, just short-term. But long-term, obviously, if you open it, you know, I think, you know, the vision would be, if this, let's say this pilot goes great, everybody loves it, it's a great idea, would be to have a number of different pathways, kind of like you have the candidates model, right? To have a number of different pathways. This is the kind of the early, you know, educator pathway to give them, you know, a real good sense of what we're doing. And then, but you might be able to offer something in English language learners, or you might be able to offer, you know, so you might come up with a variety of these ten-credit course sequences.
Sequences.
Yeah, that people could use then, you know, as a way to move across. And again, the big advantage, I think, in the long run, on the one hand, for the teacher, there's virtually no cost other than buying a book or two to help with, you know, understanding of the various course as you're going through. Beyond that, it really ties them closer to the district, right? Because they perceive this training is really probably only viable here. There may be one or two exceptions where somebody might be willing to, but it's unlikely, let's just put it that way. So, in terms of retention, it's a positive for retention. It gets them invested in their, I think, their experience here in the district in a way that ties them to the district, I think, to a greater extent, which I think is in the good, is good for all of us, because right now, we're experiencing a pretty significant amount of turnover. And so, things that we can do to focus on helping with retention, I think, are all positive.
I think the other thing that, when we talked to Jeff about it, I remember him saying is that a certain percentage of these folks are going to get lane changes no matter what. is that a certain percentage of these folks are going to get lane changes no matter what. So the question is, are they doing it through a local university, are they doing it through us? And so the net impact is maybe not as big as what the maximum capacity shows on that draft, because a certain percentage of those, of those teachers would have gone ahead and worked on a lane change anyway. So, you know, it's.
Probably the biggest impact is that it might move it a year or two earlier, you know, for a number of these people, and that's really what, so you're, the total long-term impact is probably a year or two of, you know, fifteen hundred dollars, you know, maybe two thousand dollars a year, you know, but it's, it really is probably on the count once or twice in terms of actually being a district cost.
Yeah.
And I would even add, I think, when we look at, you know, what, you know, how do you support teachers, and how do you support professional development, and if this does what I believe it can do, you're improving that performance in the classroom, what we tend to refer to as teacher advocacy as a group, which has a positive impact on student learning, and then if it does the other retention things, and I think those would be great problems to have. So if it works, is, you know, if the pilot works well, then I, yeah, we'll come back and we'll certainly take a look at that. But it's that, we all win if we're investing in our teachers, and if their professional learning is high-quality and has direct impact on our student learning, all the better. So, but that's a great question that we're, yeah, we're hopeful that that's one of the challenges we'll be facing in the future, and we'll figure it out.
Other questions or comments?
Will your membership need to vote on this if we approve this as an addendum, or can your executive board?
Yeah, so our executive board has already approved it as, because in the in-between contract settlements with, when we do these MOUs, we don't do them as everybody voting on them. The exec board acts as the proxy for the membership in the in-between times, but then obviously the language would be in the next settlement. So they would be, you know, they would be voting out as a.
Which actually takes the point that if for some reason the pilot doesn't go so well, we would remove this language, then it wouldn't apply.
That's why it says it's starting as an MOU.
Yeah.
Because the MOU is not in the contract.
Exactly.
Just could go into the contract, so.
I'd just like to get, commend you guys for your initiative on this.
That's great work, thank you.
I think it's an opportunity for our smart people to get even smarter, focused in a way that we want, that fits all of the great frameworks that we have, and it's at low cost, as you're saying, to people who are probably right out of school and paying off student loans, not wanting to incur more, that this is nothing but a win-win in my mind.
Yeah, agree.
Just want to mention Annie, who's been an important part of this too, but we just have to come to the board meetings.
Well, if I had known that, I would have said something earlier.
We could have just sent her.
Yeah. The curriculum plan especially is great, one of the things that are touched on here and that will be delivered to.
Well, one of the things that I think we're really excited about is that it's very much focused on practical application. So it's not just book learning, it's book learning in practice.
And Judy, are you tempted to audit the program?
It looks really interesting.
Teach me. I want to have an instruction. I would compliment you guys as well. From the moment I heard about this, I just have been very intrigued by it, and it sounded fabulous program. I'm very hopeful that the pilot goes well, because I think it's something we will benefit, and when I say we, kids ultimately, but the district will benefit from long-term. So I think it's fantastic. All right, we'll take a motion to, actually, I'm going to do this one at a time, we're going to approve the Shakke University pilot, so it's item seven point three. I need a motion to approve the pilot. So Joe, Judy? What's your name again? Judy, Joe and Judy, J and J, any further discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Now I need a motion to approve the MOU as just.
Survived.
I heard Matt and boy Christie, any discussion on that? All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Great work.
Welcome back and doing an update on what's going, right?
Absolutely. Actually, I would expect that.
We'll make Annie come in the next.
Actually, you know, that's a question, when, when would be a time to do that? Because you've got to have a little time under your belt, so.
Yeah, maybe middle of next year, after they've done their course.
Yeah, probably, probably a year from now would be a good time to do it, because they would be finishing up the second course, the five course.
Makes sense, okay. Good luck, thanks guys.
Did it bring Dale in in July or something, middle of summer?
All right, just wrapping up the agenda here, we don't, I think we have to, what was it called, potential action? So we've covered all our action items, unless there's something I'm not aware of. All right, any other, let's go around, and we'll include committee reports, which we often do, if it's on the left, and we go right, Judy, you're starting.
Well, I won't say anything about facilities, because we've already covered facilities. I went to the drama production at the high school, that's a big play, that's a tough play to tackle, and they did a very good job, it's really good.
Joe.
We had the finance committee earlier, that pretty much covered everything that we went over. It's good news so far, and we like, yes, the good news is the good news. We, the legislation is getting close, so when we have that figured out, we can actually start looking at the nineteen-twenty budget.
How long that special session you leave?
You said earlier, you said like one day or two days.
Depends on who you're with.
Yeah, so three and a half weeks.
Three and a half months, I was figuring.
Christie.
We had the Citizens Communications Advisory Council meeting earlier today. Great discussion around the communication plan, and tied in the survey that we're going to be doing with the community to help direct that plan as we move forward. So there's a lot of great discussion for that, otherwise that's all done.
Dave?
I don't want to steal Chris, but they did a really great job, Ashley and Crystal and our human resources and Sarah, getting ready for the retiree, but recognition, the location was much preferred to the prior year, so it's very good. We can get the horses running that night.
Where was the lens to walk back here?
It was good enough.
The answer?
You know, we're, teaching and learning is kind of winding up and actually planning for a whole bunch of summer trainings, but if you're looking for an event, it should be on your calendar, and we have our CAPS end-of-year celebration event, it's at Mystic Lake this year. So if you haven't been to that, or you have some time, it's fun to see what the kids are doing, and we generally recognize business partners and intern partners, those kinds of things.
And that's Wednesday, or two Wednesdays?
I'll list next week.
I want to get Wednesday, though.
I'm going to look at my calendar, I shouldn't have thought that. I thought it was.
It's Wednesday, Nancy, the twenty-ninth.
Okay, it's the twenty-ninth.
Good, so yeah, I'm on top of that.
Yes, that's right.
All right, thank you. Keith?
We're rounding down on our staffing, everybody's, I think most everybody has attended assignments, so we're closing, closing out the year. Now we're trying to recruit for positions we have open.
Good, good luck. Sarah?
We hosted the first-ever boys volleyball tournament over the weekend, state tournament over the weekend, and over high school. It's that little piece trivia for you, is your first boys' state volleyball champion in four sets over St. Paul Harding. Comments about the facility were off the charts, well-attended and highly organized. It was, it's a great facility to hold such a competition.
Ashley?
Nope.
Paul? Just a personal note, I was supposed to bring in your guys' invitations for Jake's graduation party, but I forgot, so they'll be emailed to you.
Very good. Very good. Matt?
A community organization I'm part of, the Shakke Lions Club, we're hosting our annual softball tournament, not this weekend, but the following, and I've found over the years that is a fantastic greeting spot. Seem to run into, I don't know, half dozen of our alumni association's Hall of Famers, and people just wandering in, and it's great to see people at that event, it's all weekend at Top Upper.
My family and I attended the teacher's celebration last week as well, and we had a great time, and it was actually a really good learning for my little six-year-old, he had a lot of questions about why we were there and all that, so I had to tell him that we appreciate teachers. Well, he was really looking forward to horses, but that quickly ended. But I get, you're right, it was great, facility was a hundred percent better than the last year, so you guys did a great job, so thank you.
I have a few ads, so can you be the last word?
Yeah, I would just echo the sentiment, and it's always nice to celebrate the great work at that recognition event and the retirees for everything they do, and we've got a lot of people working awfully hard across the district, and I know their goal is to finish the school year strong, and I wish them the best in that, and people will keep pushing right to the end, and I'm very, very appreciative of all they do every day.
All right, with item number eleven, I'm going to guess we have no visitors to recognize because the rooms pretty are empty, so we'll skip on to upcoming meetings. We have facilities this week, policy coming up in June tenth along with our work session, and then finance and the school board business meeting on the twenty-fourth, and then facilities meeting on the twenty-sixth. So several things coming up. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Your second. Thank you, Christie, all those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.